So, you know, come to order. The rules meeting of, what is today? August 13th, 2020. It's 5:30 PM. This meeting is being held over Zoom, per the governor's executive order. And what else am I supposed to say, Peg?
Um, no, that's good.
All right, great. Um, super. Do we have any minutes to approve?
We do.
Okay.
Um, we have... What? Okay?
Nothing, I said you sent a bunch out.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the... I know we have July 9th. So that is one set of minutes.
All right. Well, I didn't... In a motion for the approval of the minutes of July 9th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 We have... Hang on. We also have March 12th and July 23rd.
I make a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
All right.
I'll second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Peg, aye.
Undivided, aye as well. Okay, so motions, all pass. Um, that's good. Do we want to just jump into charter review since the mayor is here?
I am wondering if this Rachel Phillips person has a public speak issue?
Oh, yes. Rachel, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. No, I do not. I'm just here to watch our new administrative code for the cultural council get spoken about and put through, hopefully.
Okay. Um, well, then, if there's no objections, I guess we could handle that first so that you're not sitting around for an hour and a half or whatever of talking about charter... The charter review committee? Okay.
Well, if that pleases you, sure. Either way.
Cool. Um, let me just get that queued up. Um, from our last agenda.
Perhaps the mayor can explain her reasoning behind it while you're looking for it, Tom?
Sure.
Did I put you on the spot, Nicole?
You did. Um, so, I mean, the request that I put forward was on the advice and really thoughtfulness of the committee's chair and the members of the committee to, one, be clearer about its function, its vision, and how it goes forward. It made a lot of good sense, given the back and forth around the committee, the name and the mission, the vision, historically. And I, you know, credit Rachel and her team/committee for really invigorating the committee and, you know, to be thinking into the smallest details about how they're best represented officially in the city's documents.
Great. Okay, so here it is.
I just want to say, Tom, that I fully support this initiative. I think anything we can do to help the cultural council be more efficient, be a better committee, is fine with me.
Sure, no, totally. Um, would you, either mayor or Rachel, just sort of walk me through what's different from this, from the past, from the previous?
If it pleases, if it pleases the chair and the mayor, I am happy to quickly tell you the differences.
That would be... I have no opposition to that at all.
Originally, this came about because we wanted to go back to the name East Hampton Cultural Council, which requires new administrative code. We are one of over 300 local cultural councils, and the way we exist as a body is very clearly outlined in MGL as with, as are all cultural councils. At some point, we got the name ECA Grants Subcommittee. It is not what we are. And it seemed not prudent to be connecting our grantees to the Mass Cultural Council, which is such a large giving arm and has so many opportunities for funding and networking that we thought we were doing our grantees a disservice by not showing them where the, this money was actually coming from and connecting them into that network. We also realized it would streamline us and hopefully give people a better way to interact with us and understand that how they are eligible to receive grants and to be connected to this large amount of funding that is available in Massachusetts.
Okay, great. So, I, yeah, I totally see why that name change helps sort of tie the group in. Is there, other than the change of the name, does this administrative code do, like, anything about the, the structure of the organization beyond the name change?
It actually does not. MGL is pretty clear about our powers. It actually gives a very wide scope, and, and nothing changes with us structurally. We do require, according to MGL, a minimum of five members at all times on this body, lest we, we risk losing our annual funding from the Mass Cultural Council. Everything else, we have a pretty wide scope, and we just outlined it, and we took it directly from MGL with nothing added. It is all right there for us.
Counselor, rest.
Rachel, how many members do you have right now? And have you had difficulty with a quorum?
Currently, we have seven active members on the body. Quorum is half plus one, so we need four. We ideally, we have space for nine, so we are looking to increase. And we have forced turnover. We can only serve two consecutive three-year terms, according to MGL. So, as member terms expire, we really do need to fill those slots. So, we're actively looking for new members all the time.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, but if you have nine members on a body, even though only seven are appointed, you have to have five to meet. Am I not correct on that? I know there's an exception someplace, and I'm just hoping they can meet, that's all.
We went back and forth about this in charter review, and...
I think we did.
Counselor Coniff?
So, the administrative, what's the word I'm looking for? Rule, or whatever it is, specifically says that they can consist of a board of at least five and up to nine. It doesn't say it has to be nine. So, if it's at least five, that would mean that, to your point, a quorum of four.
Okay.
Three, actually.
That's the MGL, I guess, that's stating that, okay. Is that what you mean? Okay.
Yeah.
That's interesting. I don't know...
Actually, if you have five, half that's two and a half, so you'd have to have three. But you have seven, ergo, four.
Right.
I'm trying to do the math in my head.
That's interesting.
Okay, Rachel.
Yeah, a committee that has like a variable number, like, set up. But no, that's cool. All right, well, there's not any objection. This seems pretty uncontroversial, and I can see how this could be helpful. So, if there's no objections, I'd be ready to entertain a motion on this.
I move that we accept administrative code put forth by the measure on the cultural council.
Second.
Put forth by the mayor.
Second.
All right. Motion second. Counselor, rest.
Aye.
Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
And I have a aye. So, that's three to zero. Motion passes.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks.
You too.
Um, with that, I suppose we should go ahead and turn to charter review.
You want me to be a co-host and share, share the document that I sent?
Yeah, that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Can you make me a co-host, or am I already a co-host?
Make co-host. You should be all set.
So, I put this together in hopes of matching Tom's last document in which he changed the formatting. All comments here are the comments that originally happened, maybe some of our rules comments. Hopefully, this is easy to read. The only thing in it is red strikeout of words we are removing from the current charter, and yellow bold for new language. How do you want to proceed, Tom?
Well, the, the most important thing that I think we need to do is to go over, just one more time, the changes starting in section five, I want to say.
We did five. You mean, with the mayor, or six?
Yeah, article, yeah, article six, I guess it was. I'm just trying to remember where we... Yeah, no, because we did article five with the mayor two meetings ago.
Right.
There was a schedule conflict last time. We got the end of the document, and we're saying that we felt pretty good about voting on it, but there were a few issues where we just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page before we sent anything to the full council and that you had a chance to weigh in on things if you wanted.
So, mayor, this is where we were. This language, a combination thereof, we've had that forever. I don't think you had a problem with that.
No.
This new language came from the city attorney. We struck all this. The city attorney put this forward.
Yes.
And the committee's okay with it. Here is where I say right here, the committee had indicated it wanted a five-member board, but you had said at the committee level in a recent conversation that you can't feel comfortable with a five-member board. Do you want to expand on that for Peg and Tom? Because a five-member board is hard to appoint.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've had a lot of difficulty. Um, we've had a lot of difficulty keeping that board to three members. It's very technical. It's very intense. There was a concern that the three-member board couldn't confer with each other without violating quorum in public meeting law. We've worked with the board and encouraged work sessions, which is allowed under public meeting law, open meeting law. So, so we've gotten over that big hurdle, and I, I think that the, the term of three years, I mean, I'm sorry, the, the makeup of three members is, is fine and appropriate.
Okay. We did add this language, which I thought you approved last time, to clarify that the Board of Public Works does supervise and review the Department of Public Works. And they do, by the way. I'm reading this just for you, because we just reappointed, or we appointed Peg. And you said, down here for the Department of Public Works. We added this language back in. The, I believe the city attorney was not thinking we needed it, but this language matches where a lot of other...
Yeah.
Department heads, like the assessor, for instance. We did change the term to three years, which is a big change, because it was indefinite before, indefinite.
Right.
And, or until a successor's chosen and qualified, which is the same language from the other. And he shall not be a member of the Board of Public Works, because that was a debate we had, right, Tom, at one point on the committee. This language here, the evaluation language, again, is something we wanted to put back. We, as the rules committee, the city attorney thought it wasn't necessary, but we feel it is. So that he, and I, I'd just like to hear your thoughts on that one.
Um, I'm, I mean, the, I could go, I'm fine with the way that it's... I, I think it's, I think it's okay, the way it's written. My concern, or is that with all other department heads, and I understand there's, there's some special stuff with the Department of Public Works, as well as the Board of Public Works, is that all department heads are appointed. They are, you know, the search and the job offers, and the appointment is through the mayor's department. And I was just looking for consistency with the Director of Public Works, while not taking anything like the setting of rates, for instance, by the Board of Public Works. I, I'm always... While personnel in the mayor's office will always be a help and support to the Board of Public Works and the hiring or whatnot, I, I feel that there are, is a volunteer board, and the, the process is, is sensitive and covered under many rules and regulations for personnel confidentiality, HIPAA, and whatnot, and that it, it belongs more with the mayor and Personnel Department from hire to discharge or retirement.
The language that we have here shall be appointed by and responsible to the Board of Public Works is the same language. We didn't change that. And that supervision is what I think Mark was referring to. But I don't think this, it still says, "subject to the terms of the Board of Public Works." So, the Board of Public Works still has oversight, but this gives the director, the rules that, that you set up in the Human Resource Department should be followed by everybody. And I think this is a guidance more than anything.
Right. I think that when the context, when we discuss this...
Board of Public Works. Sorry, Tom?
Sorry, no, I shouldn't have butt in. But I think the context, when we were discussing this the first time, was that we felt that the language, the charter language, as it already existed, and I, I believe, mayor, you were part of this conversation. We, we felt that it didn't really explicitly say that they have to follow, like, the rule, like, the basic, like, policies that the city was set up. So, this was just there to say, like, yeah, whatever we set up about, you know, just general, like, conduct, like, that, the, like, regardless of what they decide, that this position is, is held to that, that stuff as well. And I hope that that comes through for the people of the future if they end up reading this. But I think that, that, to me, that still seems valuable.
Yeah, I'm not feeling like, I'm, I'm fine with the language as it, it stands, and I think it's a good step forward for the, just the professionalization and updating of, of the department and the director. I, I'm, yeah. The, the comments I made is like where my mind was, you know, months ago, but, but the way that it's put together and the highlights and recommendation, like, that last sentence, I, I have no, I take no issue. I would not veto this.
I just want to say that the terms of, where we say "shall be subject to the terms of Board of Public Works" allows the Board of Public Works to make an exception to Human Resource rules. For instance, if they want to change flex time or something like that, and they wanted to do it because they felt that the position needed it. I'm just using it as an example and not suggesting that to do. But I believe that the, the Board of Public Works still has that authority to go beyond whatever is in Human Resources for all of other persons. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think depending on what it is, it's a slippery slope, because the Director of Public Works is still a pay plan employee, subject to those policies.
Well, we put this in because we've had some issues with how the position was managed in the past, shall we say.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. Yeah, no, no, I, I do. And I know you just, like, used the, the example of, of flex time or whatnot, but, you know, the, the position is not by personal service contract. So, the pay plan governs, you know, what that position can be.
I think also, it gives guidance to the board.
Yes.
We want the director to follow same procedure.
Yes. Yes, I agree.
Right. Okay, so you're okay with that?
Yes.
Counselor Coniff?
Can we just correct the spelling of procedures?
Oh, did I do that? How come it didn't come up? How do you spell it?
There's not two Es. Yeah, you just...
How come my spell check didn't do that?
I don't know what's...
Yeah, Bill Gates...
You don't want me to spell anything, believe me.
Well, yeah, no, good catch. But I do think that with, thankfully, I think with a lot of the stuff we put forward, Barb does give it a once-over for that sort of thing.
I certainly hope so.
Yeah, she won't have a lot of time, though, so we...
That is true.
We can't really rely on Barb, you know, all the time.
I heard there's like an election or something, so...
Something, I don't know.
So, this whole section, mayor? We just went with the suggestions from the committee, which came from Jane originally. We thought they were okay back then.
Yes.
You, you don't have any issues with those?
No, I think they're very appropriate.
And we changed the name from Personnel to Human Resources.
And I think that's appropriate as well.
The elections include the language for ranked choice voting, which was voted on. They're back in here.
Yeah.
This is still the same as the committee suggested. We eliminated the word preliminary.
Yes.
And added precinct, as we are doing here. Now, I have to fix this. This is language from the city attorney, addressed to it, which has been certified by the city clerk, to be signed by 100 more voters. It was, so, we wanted to clarify the petitioning, right, Tom?
Well, yeah, but wait, this is language from the city attorney?
Let me go back to the other one.
I'm sorry, Dan. I'm already, like, I'm like, a little tired, but I'm just trying to keep up, but...
Okay, I, I thought it was, but let me go back to this. Are you guys seeing this one? I'm sharing the city attorney's document.
No, you have to stop sharing this one and start sharing.
I will go off with the city attorney one. I don't know what went on here. Okay, this is your version of Mark's... Yeah, where were we? We were down here.
A little bit further.
Yeah, this is his language.
Oh, yeah, so that, that's, that's all he's doing. Yeah. Yeah, so it's, we previously said, which is addressed to... Yeah, it was in, yeah, and then we're saying, "addressed to it," which have been certified by the city clerk, "to be signed by 100 or more voters."
And...
That's not a...
In my version, correct? Did I do that correctly?
Yeah, yeah. So, it was just a grammar change, but it doesn't change the substance.
Yeah, I just made, put his thing in.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'll fix this. I spelled things wrong in the rationale. This is just going to, more time given for all actions on petitions. We changed this, mayor. This was committee action.
Yep, I remember, yep.
There was more time for petitions and things to be dealt with by the council and by everything involved.
Yeah, because previously, we only had, if they, if somebody sent us a petition, we only had 30 days to respond, which, when you think, when you're meeting only every other week...
This is, this is pretty bad. They only had 15 days for the city solicitor to look at it. Mark is, I don't know if he's that best.
So, we wanted to give them a little more time. But the trade-off that we gave, which I think is a nice trade-off with the voters, is that now we have 90 days to act on something, or it's approved. So, if people are in trouble of getting all the signatures, we need to actively tell them, yeah, we need to actively tell them no, or it passes.
Right. In other words, you can't just, what do you call that? A pocket, pocket, pocket or something?
Yeah, pocket veto.
You can't do that. You have to act. See, that's an example of one word change makes a big difference.
Yeah.
Um, these are all minor changes, adding numbers. General provisions. This was Sarah's wording, which we all liked. Remember that, Nicole? Charter change. We made these changes based on discussions about trying to be more careful on how things are appointed. So, the city council has appointing review. And we made it nine members, so that was an odd number. And we gave it more time. We found that if you're going to make major decisions, like we did with this charter, we need more time. So, 15 months allowed it to get done. And a two-thirds vote. This is interesting, because we're doing that ordinance review. We changed this word, "may" to "shall." And we made it on, on every year ending in five, so that we actually do it now, or council has to do it. Can't just, because the word "may" allowed the flexibility. Well, we don't have time to do that. And it's a daunting task. We have a lot of...
It's daunting if you do it once a decade. Let it go for 30 years.
For years. It's never been done. Anyway, you're okay with all of this, mayor?
I am. I'm glad to see it.
Okay. We changed copies here, because the charter's now available online. Again, a lot of what we did in this charter change was to make it more modern, the charter, with this information. And we tried to make this more, posted on the City Village Board and City website. We added that for more transparency. And we don't do copies anymore of rules and journals, again, like it used to have to be kept at the public library.
Right.
Add to more transparency, because, again, we have the ability of electronic, digital copies. Electronic publication, again, for notice of vacancies. You do that now, anyway, so... Moving on, none of this changed, none of that changed. The word contraminous, we found that interesting. It's defined as a geographic link, so we changed it to "concurrent", which is more in keeping with the intent of the... This is Mark. He felt we should put this in upon amendment of this charter, so there is transition language. I went in last time, we all wanted to, the word "town" appeared a lot of places, and I went in and changed that. I think you guys, Tom and Peg, is amended. A lot of this is him. And we eliminated, again, a lot of this is Mark, upon amendment of this charter, the word "town" is removed. So, there is some transition language in case we amend it. All, any amendments is charter-made and concordant with laws. That's awesome, Mark.
Yeah.
All the remainder of the charter, as it exists, was transition language from 1996. And we all agreed that that wasn't necessary anymore. So, there's a great deal of language removed here because of that, including naming of the bodies like this here, this list of bodies, which is now in the clerk's office. It exists, and it's not necessarily current. So, we removed that. I would suggest you look at it just to see if you see anything in there that we should retain, but I don't...
Now, I remember this, I, I, I'm sorry, I, you're, I'm, I'm fine with it leading, and that adding on the title of it is very clear about what, yeah, upon memory. I, I thought that that was, it's important, because now we have the charter, but in between and... In between and provisions upon amendment are, it's important to, to set that framework.
So that's it, Tom. I think we're done. I would suggest, though, that both you and Peg look at this proofread for bad spelling. Anything that I may have made a mistake, like you were worried about that one section. Oh, I forgot something. We need to go back to Article Five. We had talked about this.
Yeah.
And when you were here. The change was requested by the mayor. Remember this, Peg and Tom? It was 150 days. And that was. The mayor asked for 90 days. This was not dealt with by the committee. Personally, I feel we should allow it, but this is up for debate.
I'm fine, I just wanna make sure that, like, the, the one thing is, and we can decide, we can talk about how we do this, but like. When this goes to the full council, I just wanna make sure that they understand that anything. That like the solicitor or the mayor, like, suggested, like, after the adjournment.
Yeah.
Charter review committee is just noted as such. If it's an idea that has merit, I have no problem. If somebody doesn't like it. They can make a motion to amend and deal with that, but I don't.
I do that, you think I do that?
Yeah, no, that's fine, yeah, I, I, that's just all I'm, all I'm asking is that wherever things are not the work of the committee. We just. All are aware of that.
I think I did that in the various comments I made, Tom, but I would suggest that you look at it carefully to add anything. That might help with that, like where the city attorney has given us new language, et cetera.
No, I mean, this word, this, this looks good to me. I just. If this is the, if this is the form that we're going to, like, if this is the act, the document that we will be presenting, let's just make sure those comments stay in. That's all I'm saying.
Oh, absolutely. I, I feel this is the document that can go to the council. I just think it needs some proofing, just to make sure there's nothing in there that we missed.
Right.
I don't know what the process is, that the, this has to have a public hearing before the council, and. I don't know, that'll take a while, I guess. There are five members of the council that haven't been involved, so. I'm. Cautiously optimistic, they're gonna trust the charter review committee and us, but how do you feel about this? Can we set a public hearing for, like, the second meeting in? September, maybe? I don't know. I was just asking both of you what you think.
So the reason we would not is because you want the other counselors to get up to speed on this?
I'd like them to have time to read it.
Well, here's the thing, and, and, yes, I'm on video, and this might come off a little snarkier than I sound. Too bad. We've been doing this for two months, and I don't know why we would delay it. I mean, if there was a reason, you know, if there was a storm that knocked out power for three weeks to all of us, then I could see it, but. We've been very transparent about these meetings and going through this, so. I'm not inclined, I'm, excuse me, Dan, I'm not inclined to spoon feed people, because they didn't have the wherewithal to come to these meetings. I think we need to move on. We gotta get going, because we gotta get this in front of the legislature.
I totally agree. So what I suggest, Tom, is that you look at this again. And put it forward at the meeting, maybe put it out there. If we're gonna set a public hearing for September 2nd, it's gotta get into the packet, say, Monday.
Yeah.
As amended things, doesn't it, Peg?
Yeah, I mean, what's our alternative? What are we, what month are we coming up on? October even?
Well, I don't know, if, if all we're doing is, sorry.
I totally miss September. Go ahead.
If I, if I, if all we're doing is setting a public hearing, I can just do that. We don't have to have it in the agenda that I'm gonna make a motion to set a public hearing.
Well, yeah, but we want this to be in front of the public for two weeks. I don't want it to be.
Yeah, fair enough.
We're gonna say September 2nd, you've gotta put it out there. You gotta make it part of the document package on Monday.
To be honest, if I remember correctly, we have a couple of public hearings scheduled for that September meeting, so.
Two CPA documents, yeah.
In September, just given the fact that this is gonna be minimum, like a 45 minute conversation.
Yeah.
Maybe it makes sense to, to, to put it, I mean, like, I don't wanna move it to, like. Way in October, but if it was like the second meeting in September, if, if, and Peg, you probably have a better sense of. Of the schedule than I do, but like, if that were to, if that were a lighter meeting right now than, than the first meeting in September. I, I wouldn't have any objection to.
Well, let me say this, I just saw the package. We don't have anything coming on finance. I don't know about the other committees putting anything forward for the second meeting. It'd be great if this was the only thing on the public hearing document on the 16th of September, that would be.
And we could make it so.
So let's do that. Let's, let's move to put this on the second meeting in September, and I'll, and I'll just personally ask that. Hey, if there's other things that need public hearings, if they're not totally time sensitive, could you maybe wait till October, because this one's gonna be a little bit of a doozy?
And if you could put it out there. I don't know, if you're gonna set the public hearing on, on, on next Wednesday, I think the document still has to be in the package. So they know what we're setting a public hearing for.
I don't, I don't know, I mean.
Okay.
We can just submit it via email. I definitely think I'll probably. You know, I might just give, like, I, I might talk to, for instance, the Gazette and just say, here's a rundown of the changes, and. Here's a history of what happened, just so that the public is aware, but we, there's nothing, we, we're not breaking open meeting law if we just. Send this out and say, by the way, this is the version that's gonna be in the public hearing, so please take a look at it before the second meeting in September. It doesn't necessarily have to be, like, I. I don't know if we need to rush to amend the packet, although, Councillor Coniff, if you feel that that's appropriate, I have no objection to it.
We can. I, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is just the continual go back because of the looming September 1st election. Barb is virtually flat out, and so every time we amend, that's a whole lot of work for her. It doesn't feel like much for us, but it's a lot for her. And my preference is, you know, figure out another way to get it to the public. Maybe we put it in the packet for the second. That would still give us two weeks.
Yes, I would agree with that, but Tom, as soon as you can, send it to all the councilors by email.
Yep.
I mean, I can do it as chair, or, but I would rather, because you haven't had the chance to look at it, go through it real careful. Comparing it to what Mark gave us, if you see anything at all. That you're concerned about.
Yeah, I'll do that, and as, as soon as I do, I will belong to. The, just the full membership, so that everyone has something that they can take a look at, and they'll have at least, what, three weeks?
Whatever you get, yeah.
Do so, and so I think that that is fine.
So on Wednesday, you set the public hearing and then get the document as soon as you can.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I would hope that you also look at, as you mentioned, all the comments, any comments you wanna add, certainly to help people understand this language was. You know, something the city attorney added or whatever.
Yeah.
Because we, the Rules Committee, made very few changes. And is it fair to say, Mayor, that you're on board with this document?
Yes.
So we could, we could put that forward, because that's important. And then the next step, after the city council approves it on the 16th, it has to go to the city attorney, or if. He writes the language. I actually asked Barb, but he said, she said she doesn't do that, thank God, but the city attorney has to put it in the legislative language. Which will take him some time, I'm sure.
So actually, I think I misspoke this afternoon. We're not trying to get this on the November ballot. We're trying to get it on the next, are we trying to get it on?
Oh, no.
Wow, wow.
We're not trying to get it on a ballot.
No, it's not on a ballot.
Next year? Does it need to go on the ballot?
No, so, so the way that this works.
It's a legislative, you know, I'm, I'm out of order. My apologies.
So, so.
We all are.
So the, the legislative petitions, you can always just petition the legislature for a change. The legislature has a rule that changes that substantially affect people's relationship with their government have to go on the ballot.
Got it.
Our gut on this stuff said that those changes were ranked, just voting for your mayor. This stuff is mostly about timelines for, for which we have to process things, and terms of office for appointed officials. Things like that. We didn't feel that these substantially changed the interact, the relationship between people and their government.
Okay.
When we send this to the legislature, there is a chance that some of it, they say, actually, we think that this is the case, in which case we need to decide. Whether we just drop that, or whether we ask them to make that a separate thing and try and put it on the ballot in 2021, or, or what. You know, I, I, I'm, you know, I'm like 80, 90% confident that that's not gonna happen, though, so. You know, I, my thought is, we, we just put it forward, we say.
Put it forward.
Yeah, and there's a good chance that they look at it, it bounces around in committee for a few months, and then it just passes and is done.
Okay.
Given how busy the legislature, I'm hopeful, just as a hope. That maybe Mark gets this to them by the end of the year. So that they have, right now, they're so busy with the budget and everything with the pandemic. It may get to them at least early on in the new year, and we get it through the legislature within six months. Because if they do decide this has to go on the ballot, then we have the regular city election in which the charter goes on the ballot. I don't think so. I think Tom is right. I don't think it will, but. They could make that determination, so.
Okay.
If that happens, then it happens. I mean, we, we did this. With things that went on the ballot last time, and it, you know, it was a crazy couple of months for the people who were on those ballot committees, but it, like. And we have a highly civically engaged city that is willing to hear people out on these things and, and. Judge them, and the people will just decide. I mean, like, i- if it happens, it's not a big deal, but I don't think it's gonna happen.
Okay.
So do we need to vote on sending this to the full council?
I believe we do, and I'll entertain that.
Motion, do we accept the draft charter review as submitted by the charter review committee with a full council for adoption?
I'll second that.
All right, so motion is second. Councillor Coniff?
Hi.
Councillor Rest?
I.
I vote I. Motion passed. Great job, everyone. Thank you for your hard work over the last three or four meetings on this stuff, and. You, Mayor, for coming along and, and, and sharing your thoughts and your input on this. I really appreciate it.
And thank you, Omar. You've come to every meeting. We love Omar.
So I've got the, the side view, so I don't get an Omar bubble. Okay, now I do. So, since I've got everybody here, and we managed to do that in only 45 minutes, which is, I think, pretty impressive. I wanted to go over a couple of things in, that are on our agenda right now, and just sort of. Talk about. Where you guys are on this, what, how you'd like to proceed. Just, just so that, just in terms of scheduling and handling the next few months, and, and so that we can make sure that the counselors involved and people in the public. Are just, you know, on the same page, because you know me, I like to have a clean plate, and we do not have that right now.
Not even close.
No.
Well, I think we could deal with the emails tonight.
We could deal with the emails tonight. My one thing is, I don't. Either, neither of the sponsors are here, and I got an email from, or a text from Councillor Zaret. Saying that he actually had some more thoughts on this that he'd like to present to us. So, in, out of deference to him as a co-sponsor, I, I guess, I, I'd like, I'd prefer to not move on that tonight.
Okay.
A shame, because that seemed like kind of the lowest hanging fruit.
Go ahead. The charter review committee discussion, are we still doing that? I'm not sure what that is.
Well, you know, I think that the idea was that we were gonna hold off on that until we were done with this and sort of see where, where we landed. But where, where, where are, yeah, Councillor Coniff?
I'm just curious, why is Pilot not on this agenda?
It was removed because of the pandemic and the budget. A while back from the agenda without prejudice, so it has to be put back on it by the council.
Wow, I have no memory of that, okay.
I don't either.
I don't, Dan, when did they do that? I have no memory.
You'd have to look back at the minutes, but I do recall that.
Heck, I was wondering the same thing. I remember us saying.
It was us, right? I'm pretty sure it was rules.
Oh, yeah, definitely was rules. It was on the.
It went to rules.
It's on the city council agenda listing for committees for this week.
Okay, then I'm wrong. If it's still there.
Yeah.
Maybe there was talk of tabling it, and we didn't do it.
Unfortunately, I don't think we can discuss it, because it's not on our agenda. I don't know if it happened, but.
Well, we, we have to make sure that maybe this is just a typo, that we get it back on the agenda. I want Bill to be here for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have to decide how we're gonna proceed, because we need to get the players involved, all the Willston, all the charity.
Yeah, yeah.
All the churches, anybody who wants to talk about it.
Yep.
So maybe that's an idea for our next meeting, is we make sure that we can have a time, because I know that Councillor Lynch has had. You know, I mean, he's a manager of a bunch of essential workers in a crazy time. You know, grocery stores are, are nuts right now, and. I don't know exactly what his, you know, at least when this started, like, right when, when he had submitted this and then the pandemic started. And the sense I got was that he, you know, he was running around like crazy. And so I had sort of like, hey, can we put this off for a little bit? He didn't really object. At least that's my recollection of the, of the conversation, but. Maybe we need to make sure that we can have a meeting on a day that he is able to attend, since he had two items before us, and we figure out. I think that they're, right, on, on that matter. I, I, there's some logistical challenges the Councillor Rest just mentioned, that I, you know, about like. If we have a, a big conversation like that, what, what does that end up looking like remotely, and, and. Yeah, I'm, I don't have, I'm pretty agnostic about that, but there's some stuff we, we definitely need to discuss, and also on the emails. You know, I know that Councillor Zaret has some ideas, and so it'd be great to have that. Maybe, maybe that's our ideas on the, in our next meeting, we try and sit down. And really address those two things. And in the meantime. I wouldn't mind if everyone just gave some thought to. Charter review committee, and what, what that, you know, what, you know, what people would wanna see. Out of that, if we should do it, what the timing should be on that, because I, I, since we turned our attention to this, I haven't. Actually given that a tremendous amount of thought, and I guess it, it's kind of time for us to start thinking about. Now that we've got this off our plate, we think, actually, we can talk about it now. I just don't have a lot of thoughts right now. Councillor Rest?
My, my feeling is, I like to see where the charter ends up from the legislature before you start changing it again. Unless you're certain of certain items in the charter you want to change. That are definitely not in what we just submitted. I mean, there's two roots to this. I do still feel, as the city attorney said, that we've. We've met the charter obligation for 2020. But I am not, I'm not against establishing another committee. I just don't know if, given all the ordinance committee that you're doing, which I think has a priority, that we should try that now. The stuff that's in the charter that we may still want to deal with, may, in my view, we could wait on it, because I think that ordinance committee needs to have a priority. And I don't know if we can ask. For two major committees like that to be working at the same time, but that's just my thoughts. I mean, I can go either way. I'm not a bullet guy, so. Mayor.
I would, I would just wanna remind this committee. That the, the initiatives around the ordinance review, as well as the charter review, at some point will cover, will, will. Require legal review or advice. And I did reach an agreement with President Coniff to hold down $10,000 for these uses of the council. That's gonna go pretty quickly. And, and the grant money that, or the money within some of the big grants we've gotten for legal services is drying pretty, pretty tight. So, you know, we, we still. And, and we have negotiations, so I, I would just, not that the work can't be done, but the expectation. and, and we have negotiation, so I, I would just, not that the work can't be done, but the expectation and use of legal funds to get it done will be will be tight during a year where free cash and revenue is not in abundance and there's four uses for every dollar.
So, you know what, you've actually kind of just, I, I'm sorry, Dan, you had your hand up.
I was just gonna say, given that, that's a very good point. This, this current charter is gonna take some attorney time and the ordinance is gonna, is gonna take a lot of time. I don't think we should put anything else on its plate and we're probably not done writing new, new law as a council. There's other ordinance that'll come through, so. I don't think we should do anything more with the charter in this term. It's to me, given the cost of city attorney fees, that's just me.
You know, a few months ago, I probably would have been really opposed to this, but I, I think given the situation that we're in, given what we have, if anyone wants to petition the legislature for an individual charter change on a specific point, they're free to do so.
Yeah.
You know, if the public want something, they're free to petition us to make that happen. So there's nothing stopping us from addressing individual points as they come up, if that is a thing that happens. Um, but when it comes to, um, the, uh, when, when, when it comes to the actual matter of, 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 of doing a whole other committee, I think that you, that, that Counselor Rest and, and Mayor LaChapelle, you bring up really good points that, A, we, it's maybe a little silly to be talking about reviewing, like, uh, amending the charter while the charter is in the legislature, working through the steps. And also, yeah, we're gonna be really short on money and we have another, you're welcome, big resource draining project that I proposed, uh, coming down the pike, so. Between those things, I, I think it's, maybe we should, um, I, I would be, uh, I would be amenable to, to removing that item without prejudice.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Um, all in favor? Uh, Counselor Coniff?
Aye.
Counselor Rest?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Okay, that's good.
So we got two things done.
I would suggest another meeting in two weeks, maybe, Tom, to get the pilot thing discussed and to get the administrative code off, so we can get into the ordinance.
Didn't we just get the administrative code off?
Uh, not the administrative code, the, uh, email thing off.
What about ordinance review committee? What, are we talking about that tonight?
Um.
You told everybody we wouldn't.
I, I kind of told, yeah, at the meeting I said no, and so I, um, the, the one thing I'll say, you know, about it is, uh, for that, for me personally, um, I feel it's really important that, you know, that, that we have, um, a bit of a public conversation about what that ends up looking like, both in membership and in terms of scope and, and actually also in terms of sort of process, because there's, you know, there's a lot of energy right now and a lot of sort of feelings about this stuff. I, I think this is a, a thing that we can actually work on and it would be a real shame to me if we get into it only to have some, you know, members of the community say that, oh, this, the, the membership of this committee is all wrong, or you're looking at the wrong things, or the way you're going about this. Now, I'm not saying everyone's gonna agree and we're all gonna be perfectly happy with whatever we come up with, but I want to give people a real opportunity to have like those thorough conversations. So, so my goal, and I'm willing to talk about doing this in a different way, but my goal was to try and, try and clear the plate as much as possible so that we can have like a really in-depth conversation about, you know, like, who is, like, 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 what is this actually gonna look like? You know, how do we do this right?
I totally agree, Tom. So maybe in two weeks, we deal with all the other stuff, the pilot and the, uh, emails. And then two weeks after that, the only thing on the agenda is the ordinance committee and we can get out to the public and tell them we're gonna talk about it then. I don't know, what do you think, Peg?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, do we want it? My schedule, this Thursdays on the week that there's not a city council thing has been working pretty well for us so far. Do we want to try that again for the 27th?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay.
Peg, go set that up for us.
Yep.
So we've removed the administrative code, the charter committee discussion. And we have to make sure that Barb puts back on the agenda the pilot program. And we're gonna discuss emails. So we've, we've done pretty good. Only have to talk about it the next meeting, unless we get more, another resolution or something.
Never know. Well, no, I, I think I, I told you, uh, both, you know, as chair, I'm putting down my foot on this. With resolutions come here, they get addressed when there's a clean plate. Because.
Really? Good for you.
Last term, there was that, that thing with the, like, the, the committee rolls that I had written up. And I submitted that in August and we didn't touch it until December, because every, every time there was a meeting, someone submitted a new resolution and there was always like an interested, like, there was always an interested group who was like organized and really cared about this. And I, you know, so I wanted to be responsive to that, and so I, I dealt with that and then we just, it was, it was months and we never got to my thing, so. You know, my, I, I just am saying from now on, like, people are welcome to do resolutions. They have, you know, they're, they're important to people in the community, but they happen when we don't have, like, actual, like, time-sensitive substantive work. If there's a resolution that, like, when we did the thing for the yes-on-three a couple of years back, where like, it really kind of needs to happen before a certain date, then, you know, we can evaluate that, but I just think that in terms, in terms of prioritizing things, I have to prioritize the rules part before the government relations part.
Well, from a practical point of view, there's nothing coming in the next meeting. If something comes up in September, we don't have to touch it until we're done with everything else. So I think we're okay on that. Plus, I'd be happy to know that I pushed that we voted on that nuclear resolution right on site. I don't, we didn't want that to go to the committee.
Yeah, I was kind of like, dude, so, so much stuff.
In there was, was, was the old proceeding, so.
Well, and that's the other option, is if, if there's a resolution that's just utterly benign and not controversial in any way, then we can just.
Do it in one meeting.
Yeah, so. All right, guys, um.
All right.
Counselor.
Omar speaks.
Mr. Chairman, just for the information, the last time the pilot was on the agenda for the rules and, uh, rules agenda was April 28th.
Really? Okay, well.
We gotta put it back because it's not off of our plate.
Okay, I will talk, I'll send an email tonight to Barb and that will be one of the two things I discuss.
Um, I mean, I think we talked about not getting into it right then, because we were in the thick of the pandemic, but I don't remember taking it off. I think we just kind of said we're gonna move it as a lower priority. Because he just introduced it in March, so I don't know why we would take it off so quickly without having a conversation. But, who knows, maybe there's minutes that say that and we just haven't taken it off.
Well, we can, we can make sure at the next meeting we put it back on, if it's, if Barb says, oh, we took that off. But I don't recall. I know we talked about it, but I don't recall.
Yeah, so I'll just get to the bottom of whatever went on there and, um, we'll take it from there.
You just have to make sure for Wednesday, we have, we, the full council takes a vote to reestablish it. If indeed we voted to remove it.
Right.
You just have to look at all the minutes. I don't think we did. I, I thought we talked about it, I'm not sure.
No, I don't think we did. I, I think I'd remember, I haven't, I haven't voted to remove anyone's business without prejudice.
Okay.
Ever as my best chair of this committee. So, except for maybe my own tonight, so, um, you know, I, I just, I think I'd remember that.
All right, then I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, I've got a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Dan Rest says aye.
All right, Tom Peak says aye. All right.
Everybody.
I say aye. I don't count but aye.
Okay, great.
You're always welcome to ayes.
The vote is four to nothing.
There you go. All right, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Night.
Bye.